Hello, everyone. My name is Kevin Mizikar. I'm the Town Manager here for the town of Shrewsbury. Thank you for the opportunity to allow some of us to present to you the Warren articles for the upcoming May 22 annual Town Meeting. Just like last year, Town Meeting will not be held on its traditional Monday evening. We're going to have it at 8:30 in the morning at the Shrewsbury High School Fieldhouse with full COVID-19 protocols in place. So, the Field House gives us the opportunity to spread folks out. And you may remember, it's the venue that we used for last fall special Town Meeting on September 29th. So, our goal today is to provide a brief overview to you on each one of the 42 Warren Articles. And this should help you hopefully understand our intention behind each Warren Article and give you a little bit of better idea. All staff will be at the Town Meeting, ready to answer any questions that you have. But hopefully, we provide just enough information to make you a little bit more comfortable and we can keep the meeting moving along and have it completed on Saturday. We'll certainly conduct a full debate on all Articles, but we're trying to get a little bit of a jumpstart on that, just like we did last year. So, without further ado, it's my pleasure to have, to be joined by the Assistant Town Manager Kristin Lass. And we will work through most of the Warren Articles today and be joined by a couple other folks later on. So, Kristin, we'll start off, if you could just provide a really brief overview of Article 1, and then we'll work from there.
Absolutely. So, as many veteran Town Meeting members may know, we had a traditional Warren Article layout. We have jiggled that up a little bit last year and again this year, so it might be out of order conventionally for you as a Town Meeting member, but we'll do our best today to walk you through those Articles. So, Article 1 is a very traditional Article to receive reports of Town Officers or Committees and receive those reports. The first Article is to receive the report of the Beale Early Childhood Center Building Committee. And that will probably be a verbal report given by the Chairperson of that Committee.
That's correct. And then Article 2 will be a cleanup for the fiscal year 21 budget. And we'll be looking to transfer funds within the Stormwater Enterprise Account totaling $4,332.12. We'll be moving those funds from expenses, the 4, 5, 6 Accounts, to the Personnel Lines to cover costs associated with the Fall Street Sweeping Program for that. So, Article 3 is very interesting and new this year. And we'll be looking to establish a Special Purpose Override Stabilization Fund. And this is a new concept for the Town, something that we've been discussing a lot over the last few weeks and months in the lead-up to the override ballot question that was approved on May 4th. So, first, thank the voters for coming out and voting in the annual Town Election. And the real reason behind this, so this Article establishes a Special Purpose Stabilization Account where we will hold funds to help extend the duration of the override. The Board of Selectmen and the School Committee have committed to a four-year duration, at least, on this override. And this will be the main account mechanism that we will use to hold funds and prolong that. And Article 4 puts funds into that Special Purpose Stabilization Fund if Article 3 is approved. And the amount that we intend to add to that account in the first year is $3,132,074. And those funds would be later drawn upon in future years, again, to provide sufficient funding to alleviate the structural deficit that we were facing and continue to face until we get these additional funds in place. And then, we move on to one of the most significant Articles and purposes or responsibilities held by Town Meeting, which is Article 5 and the Annual Operating Budget of the Town. This will fund all charges and expenses of Departments starting July 1, 2021, which is fiscal year 2022. And the total amount that will be proposed through this Article is $137,881,286. Kristin, do you want to explain to folks just what the operating budget is and how each Department is funded?
Absolutely. So, as you receive your Town Meeting packets in the mail over the next week, they will be mailed out on Friday, May 7th. You will see on Page 8 of that booklet, the start of Article 5 and the operating budget, and then details after that for several pages, Department by Department. So, the operating budget really lists every Department available and all Boards and Commissions that require funds. These operating funds are for salaries, for contractual services, for supplies and materials, and for separate appropriations as necessary. These Articles do not cover our utility budgets, such as water, sewer, stormwater, and pay-as-you-throw. We'll get to those in a little bit in our conversation today. And they also don't include capital items that are items $25,000 or more. That's in a separate Article as well that we'll discuss today, such as fire trucks or other types of equipment to purchase. So, really, each Department has a line item budget for their operating budget and has to operate within that. If there are changes throughout the year, if more funds are necessary, we could either go back to the Finance Committee Reserve Fund, or if needed, at a Town Meeting in the future, funds could be transferred. And I know we have an Article discussing that further on as well. So, Kevin, I don't know if you wanted to add anything else related to the operating budget?
Yeah, I really, I should note that with the passage of the override ballot question, this budget is proposed to fully fund the Superintendent's Level Services Carry Forward Operating Budget. So, it eliminates, it does provide sufficient funding to eliminate the deficit that the Superintendent has talked about on the school side and that I've talked about on the municipal side at previous meetings with the Finance Committee and with the Board of Selectmen. So, they are funded at the recommended level service funding levels. It fully funds the opening and operation of the new Beale Elementary School that will be coming online for the calendar year 2021, '22 school year. The primary source of funding for the operating budget is taxation, and over 133 million of the 137 will come from taxation. And then, a variety of other sources provide revenue into the operating budget. I did just want to note that Selco, in order to cover debt service that is issued by the Town on their behalf, is funding $1,541,436. So, those funds come in from Selco and eliminate, or fund their debt service, so it's not borne by the taxpayers, it's through their rates. So, that's a very high-level overview of the budget. Again, each and every Department Head will be available and onsite during the annual Town Meeting to answer any questions that folks may have. It is a level service budget. That means we'll be able to provide the same level of services that we have in the past, but that doesn't necessarily mean there aren't staffing increases. There are in several Departments. As the Town continues to grow, we're eagerly awaiting the 2020 Census Data, but we know we're over 38,000 residents, continuing to grow over the last decade and recent years. It takes a lot of effort to maintain the complexity of municipal operations that we do, so we are proposing some additional staff that we can highlight for you at Town Meeting. So, I think that's the end of the operating budget. And then, we move from there into Article 6. And that Articles 6, 7, and 8 are really of the same nature, if you compare the three of them together. And they're receiving funds from Selco, two sources in Selco, the total just over $1 million. And then, $500,000 in free cash to offset the tax rate. So, this really means that we don't have to raise as much money from taxation because we're receiving funds from other sources other than the taxpayers to cover those operating expenses of the Town in the previous Articles. So, that's a great benefit to the taxpayers and a good continued partnership with our electric and cable utility company, Selco. And then, Article 9 is a standing Article that we always have funding for. It's very important. It funds medical expenses of retired disabled police officers and firefighters. The total this year is 6,921. We fund this on a reimbursement basis, so as any individual was unfortunately disabled in the line of duty, we cover their out-of-pocket medical expenses while, as their retiree. So, we will raise and appropriate those funds through taxation to cover those costs for them on their behalf. So, now, we really begin to move into the utility aspects of our operations. And we have several different utilities that we operate through enterprise funds or very similar financial mechanisms. And in general, using an enterprise fund is a way to ensure that the cost of a particular utility, for instance, say, our water services, are covered by the ratepayers and not by general taxation. Why is that important? Well, it means businesses, you know, who operate within the Town or some of our largest consumers, they, you know, that business entity pays for it and the taxpayers of Shrewsbury do not. So, these are held in separate accounts and completely balanced, so all the funds that we're raising from our utilities come in through our ratepayers. So, we'll just talk a little bit about each one of those. And the first one is Municipal Residential Solid Waste Collection Program. Kristin, maybe you could provide a little bit of an overview, and then we'll bring in a couple other folks to help us with the rest of our utility budgets.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, the Municipal and Residential Solid Waste Collection Enterprise Fund is also known as Pay-as-you-throw. We use a contractor waste management to pick up our trash, recycling, yard waste, and Christmas trees. We have a contract with Waste Management, and this is how we raise funds for that. We charge the residential users a fee for bags, so the pay-as-you-throw concept. And then, we also use funds from this account and from taxation to fund the pay-as-you-throw program. So, this year, we have accounted for what is available as part of the contract with Waste Management. And we do not fund any salaries from this account, as it is totally contract-based.
Great. Thank you so much. So, now, we'll bring in our first special guest, Mr. Dan Rowley, into the conversation. Dan is our Water and Sewer Superintendent. So, he certainly has the benefit of his program and operations touching each and every resident and business within the community. So, welcome, Dan. It's good to see you. So, Article 11, Dan, is the operating budget for the Sewer Department. And I just wonder if you could talk a little bit about that and any changes from the current fiscal year for this utility?
Okay. So, on the Sewer Utility side of our operations, not a tremendous amount of changes from year to year. We did increase our temporary salary and wages for one seasonal person to be more in line with the competitive nature of employment. So, there's a slight increase there. The only other item I wanted to highlight is that we do expect to send sewer flow to Worcester this year, with all the improvements on Route 20, with the BT Pump Station, which is at the intersection of Lake Street and Route 20, reaching substantial completion. We will be sending flow to Worcester over the next fiscal year, and there'll be a slight increase in our charges for that to the utility. So, we have planned to head for that. We're currently working with Worcester on some details to send flow, and so we expect to start sending flow in their direction in the near future.
Great. So, in total, for sewer operations, Dan, it looks like we're going to spend just a little bit less than $6.7 million. And that's not a significant increase over the previous years, despite those changes that you mentioned. So, thank you for that. And then, moving into Article 12 is the Sewer Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year '22. Is there anything that you wanted to highlight with those projects?
Sure. So, over the past year, year and a half, we spent a lot of time looking at the capital needs of the Sewer Department and really developing a solid five-year capital plan. And what we identified is there's certainly some large capital needs that we need to address in the near future, one of which is the Rolfe and Maple Pump Stations, which receive a large amount of the Town's flow. We also have an interceptor that goes from Rolfe Ave up Maple Ave that has been in service for nearly 60 years. So, there's a critical need to address the hydraulics of those two stations, as well as replace that sewer main. So, the funds that you see here is for the engineering services of the design of those improvements. Inflow and infiltration work will supplement existing funds for years 7, 8, and 9 of our investigations, where we go out and we'll, we have a contractor that will go out and clean and camera inspect sewer lines, as well as open up manholes and inspect. So, we have a construction project that was recently bid. We received favorable results for those construction improvements, so some of these funds will be used for that. And then, it will also fund the Year 11 Investigations. The radio telemetry, the SCADA upgrades, this will also supplement existing funds to allow us to complete upgrading the SCADA systems in 17 remaining stations that were on an old system that failed, that we have a temporary system in, and it will allow our operators to use an iPad and have data on pump run, which pumps are running, and levels of the wet well, and it'll bring it all into one system. I think that is the highlights for the Sewer Capital Budget. And there's more information on our website, including our rate study and a lot more details on some of these projects.
You know, I know in the past that we used to, at Town Meeting historically, put some funds into what was called the Sewer General Construction Fund and kind of set some funds aside for capital improvements. And this year's capital improvement plan has something called a Capital Improvement Reserve for $250,000. Can you just talk a little bit about that and what your thoughts are in moving in that direction?
So, that is going to allow us to have funds available for future needs if, you know, certain things that aren't expected come up in the sewer system, which we have 170 miles of main and countless manholes and a lot of moving parts. So, we need to have a reserve available for those things that we can't predict. And unfortunately, that is the nature of the business. As much maintenance as we do, it's still something we need to be prepared for.
Sure. So, that'll be your backup plan throughout the fiscal year if something pops up that we just can't foresee at this time?
Correct.
Great. Thank you. So, total capital investments for the Sewer Department will be $2,087,500, and they are detailed between Pages 28 and 29 in your Town Meeting books. And then, we will be moving from Sewer and talking a little bit about our Water Services and Water Enterprise Funds. So, Article 13 is the operating budget for Water. So, Dan, did you want to talk a little bit about that as well?
Yes. So, there are a few changes in this budget from last year. One I'd like to highlight is I have included two more maintenance craftsmen who will be working to address some system maintenance needs that we have that are being required by Mass DEP, which are having a valve exercising and cleaning program, where we actually will go out to each valve, clean them, and exercise them to make sure that we can get on them in an emergency and that they function, as well as having a formal hydrant maintenance program, where we go around and we'll actually, we have an inventory of our hydrants, and when we inspect them, and just making sure that they're going to function as needed in the event of an emergency, as well as continuing the Unidirectional Flushing Program. We're seeking to bring that in-house. We've had great success with our contractor, Hydratech. They've completed six out of the 12 zones to date, so that's been very successful, and we need to keep that going. And we feel bringing in some of our own staff is the appropriate way to go. Just some other minor changes. We've included some adjustments in electricity for the water treatment plant due to additional pumping that we did last year. I'm not sure if that's related to COVID and the change in the usage due to folks being home, but we have prepared for that. We've adjusted the potassium hydroxide number. We've increased that by $50,000, again, just to be prepared for additional pumping. That allows us to adjust our pH. And just some other minor additions of some expenses, such as we have a formal program to remove AC pipe. Once, we do have it, you know, it's part of our water system. When we have a water main break, there is a process that we need to follow, so we've included funds for that. And again, I adjusted the temporary salaries and wages for a part-time person to help us during the summertime. I've increased that a little bit to be more competitive.
Great. Thank you. So, annual operations, annual operating cost for the water utility is proposed at $2,828,303 for fiscal year 2022. Turning from ongoing day-to-day operations, Dan, we'll look at the Capital Improvement Plan for the Water Department. And I did just want to thank you and the crews, both contracted and internal staff, on the work that you've done with Unidirectional Flushing. We've received a lot less water quality complaints over the last year in comparison. Takes a lot of extra resources to do things proactively like that, and I think we've done a really good job. So, thank you and your crews for all the hard work that you've done there. So, what are your plans for improvements, capital improvements for fiscal year '22 for Water?
So, one of the changes from our typical capital budgets, I have included some maintenance for the Oak Street Tank. So, we have six water storage tanks here in Shrewsbury. Four of them are steel, two are concrete. And one of the things that I've identified over the last few years is that, you know, there's some serious maintenance needs on these tanks. Primarily, our steel tanks are in need of painting, sandblasting, cleaning. So, I've included funds in the Oak Street, for the Oak Street Tank, which is our top priority to address over the next year. And I'm looking at the water tanks as really an asset that needs to be maintained with a formal plan in place. So, I don't want to just paint it one year and forget about it until the day comes and it's, you know, in really poor condition. So, we'll be working on this every year, addressing these needs. So, we've included funds for that. We're going to end up doing a little less water main replacement than we typically do, because the money's going to be going to the tank. So, we've identified Boylston Circle as the primary street. We'd like to address that water main. And then, we've also identified Fifth Ave Right Of Way as probably an alternate, depending on the bidding climate. It's definitely hard to predict, you know, with the level of construction out there. And then, also Catalina Drive and Jenny Street probably is a second alternate. And then, we just have some equipment for our crew. We want to replace our heavy-duty trailer to move our excavator around. We want to buy a hydraulic hammer that goes on the excavator, so the folks can be more efficient in the wintertime and actually have the hydraulic hammer on the trailer, so if we hit frost or if there's ledge when they have an emergency. And we've also included funds for an outdoor storage structure. So, we currently store all of our pipe, hydrants, road plates, everything we need for day-to-day maintenance or in an emergency just outside. So, we're looking for a carport or just something, you know, relatively inexpensive to allow us to have those, you know, those critical assets protected and available to us at a moment's notice.
Great. Thank you, Dan. So, Article 15, then we turn to our final utility or enterprise fund in the utility area, which is Stormwater Services. And Stormwater Services for the upcoming fiscal year is proposed at $1,357,205. There is one additional full-time equivalent engineer that's proposed for Stormwater Services, and that is due to the ongoing continued requirements of our federal permit that we have to comply with for stormwater purposes. And then, we'll also be doing about $500,000 worth of capital improvements for stormwater drainage projects and the replacement of a street sweeper, which is a critical part of stormwater requirements on an annual basis in Articles 15 and 16. So, those are our utility operations and capital improvements associated with each one of those utilities. And now, we turn to Article 7, and I'll face it's also very familiar to residents in Town. Public Facilities Director Angela Snell is here with us to kind of help us walk through the details within the Capital Improvement Plan and some subsequent Articles after that. So, welcome, Angela. It's good to see you.
Hi, thank you.
Sure. So, I'll touch upon a couple, and I know you're going to give us some details on most of the DPW capital improvements outside of the utilities. I'll start off by just touching on a few of them that aren't related, starting with Library, where we're going to do some computer hardware refreshing, as we need to turn over those pieces of equipment that have a, you know, defined useful life. So, there's about $45,572 proposed to do that. We'll do our traditional police cruiser replacements for $237,000. And then, for the first time this year, we included, to try to be more transparent, all the overarching capital investments or hardware investments that we're making for the IT Department, and they're listed out within this plan. So, Angela, our plan totals $1,941,360. And the balance of the Departments that are receiving funds fall within the purview of the Department of Public Works. So, I was wondering if you wanted to start off by talking about some improvements that we're going to make for DPW Departments?
Sure. So, for engineering, we're going to have sidewalk improvements for $150,000. This is the first year this request has been funded, and it's to make, you know, improvements to the various sidewalks throughout Town. There's a list a mile long of improvements that are needing, so this will, you know, get us started. The next ones are highway department-related. So, the first one is for $50,000. It's to replace Truck 1, which is a 2015 Chevy pickup truck. It has 100,000 miles. It's used every day by the Highway Division Manager, and it will be replaced with a 2021 Chevy 2500 with a plow pickup truck. The next one is to replace Truck 16. It's a 1998 CAT loader. It's going to be for $239,000. This has had, this is a vehicle that's used every day, day-to-day operations. If there's a truck, tree that falls in the road, they bring this, the loader out to remove it. It's used for snowplow operations and, you know, any other thing that comes up. The new loader will also have a plow and a wing on it. Then, the next one is installation of vehicle lifts for $125,000. You may recall that they ordered lifts a couple years ago. That was funded, and they received them in January 2020. They put out to bid the installation twice, and the bids came back too high. So, having this additional fund will help install two vehicle lifts in the mechanics area at the garage. The next ones are Parks and Recreation-related. We have a truck replacement for $57,000. This is to replace a 1990 Chevy 150 truck. It was handed down from another Department. So, we purchased a Ford F-350. It's a regular cab with two-wheel drive and a service body. The next one is for Dean Park Playground. It's $200,000. We've been working with an architect and a playground consultant to help do some design work for us, and it's going to make the playground more accessible. We're going to renovate some of the pieces that are there and add to it and, you know, do some regrading of the area, so it'll be used for everybody. The other one is a Maple Ave Roof Repair. This is for $20,000. This is the storage garage at Maple Ave Recreation Fields. It houses our irrigation controls, and we use it for some of the supplies at that field. The next set of improvements falls under public buildings. This first one is $35,000 to replace a 1999 pickup truck with a new four-wheel-drive pickup truck. Currently, the 1999 one needs a lot of repairs, and we would get a 3/4-ton 4x4 pickup truck as a replacement. The next one is $40,000. It's to replace a 2001 van. It was actually the library van, so another hand-me-down vehicle. This van is used for maintenance that goes to all the buildings, the schools, and it would be replaced with a transit cargo van. The next project would be $100,000 to remodel the Assabett Valley Collaborative Space. This is in the back of Shrewsbury High School. This space would be remodeled to make room for classrooms for Shrewsbury High School and do some renovations in that area. The next one is $100,000- The next one is $100,000 for the high school brick repair. These funds would be used to replace the brick window sills at the high school with precast concrete sills and replace some of the flashing. We've had some issues with the drainage under the existing ones, so this would be the start of that project. The last one for public buildings is Town Hall Roof Repairs for $230,650. This replaces the existing asphalt shingle roofs, replacing the flat roofs on the east and west wings of the Town Hall, repair the railings and the cupola. It would also involve some reengineering of the attachment points of the existing handrails up there. And I think I had another one that I didn't put on my list. It's in the book, though. The, let me see here. Oh, Floral HVAC Repairs. There's five units that would be replaced at Floral Street School. It would cover the administration area and a classroom next to the media center, the heating and cooling system. That's $100,000. And then the last one is Town Hall Old Selectmen's Room renovation for $10,200. That's making the conference room, dividing it up and adding like a small office area because we are running out of space here at the Town Hall. And I think there's one other one for the Senior Center, $24,000 for Senior Center Security System. That also includes the Brevo Door System, having electronic key cards for the staff to get in and out of the building.
Great. Thank you so much, Angela. I also forgot to mention a couple of things that are going to the Fire Department, which is the replacement of their current Ford Escape vehicle, which is used for fire safety and by some of the command staff. And then Angela mentioned the Brevo System, which is our security controls across all town buildings. We'd be installing them at Stations 2 and 3, which not only provides for ease of access and common way to access the building without keys, but it also allows us to know who come and go, who comes and goes. It's hooked up to the, our network system so we can help monitor those buildings. So again, the total capital investments that are proposed for this year that we've just detailed come in Article 17 for a total cost of $1,941,360. We're using $124,075 from general taxation. $230,650 are transferring from the Parker Road Roof Replacement, which Town Meeting previously approved, but came in under what our estimates were for, and that's the funds that Angela mentioned would be going to the Town Hall Roof. And then an additional use of $1,586,635 in free cash, which obviously funds the vast majority of it, since these are one-time projects and that's a one-time source of revenue. So that's why we use free cash. So moving on from there, we go into several more articles, starting with Article 18 is the proposed use transfer of $750,000 from free cash into the General Stabilization Fund. The town has a policy that we are, we've set a policy goal of 5% of funds in our General Stabilization Fund. Adding these funds would get us to 2.19% of the proposed budget, so we still have a little ways to go. This is very critical in maintaining not only financial security for the town, but it's critical in helping us maintain our AAA bond rating. And in the future, if there are sufficient funds within the General Stabilization we're at or over policy, we could actually look to those in the future if we have any financial difficulties and draw down upon them. Unfortunately, that's never been an option to the town in the past because we haven't had sufficient funds in there to actually access. You know, it could have been valuable during the pandemic. Luckily, we received outside funding, but future instances of things like that, we may not be able to. So Angela, I wanted to turn back over to you for Article 19, which is the establishment of maximum spending limitations for our revolving accounts. So perhaps you could talk a little bit about what a revolving account is, and then how much is required for the Donahue Rowing Center, which is one of the two, including the Council on Aging Transportation Fund.
Right. So both of the revolving accounts allows the town to collect money and spend money out of that. So typically, it's designated for something. So for like the rowing center, we have 10 bays. We charge a fee and have lease agreements with all the, we have high schools, we have colleges, and we have clubs. So that money comes in from them once a year, and then we use that to pay for the day-to-day operations at the rowing center, you know, the heat, the oil, the lights, the mowing, the cleaning, things like that. This year for the rowing center, we'd like to increase the spending limit to $400,000 because we are planning some major improvements to the facility. We just went out for repairs to the main dock. That was like $23,000. That's reboarding the dock and fixing some of the structure. We'd also be doing some repairs to the, to the actual building, the brickwork of the bays. And then we're working with an architect to design a new dock that would allow for coaches to store some of their wakeless boats on the water so they don't have to bring them in and out, so.
Great. And Kristin, did you want to maybe just touch on the COA revolving account, which relates to transportation?
Absolutely. This is a traditional article for the COA Transportation Fund. As many know, we operate four vans through the town of Shrewsbury. Two are out of the Worcester Regional Transit Authority, and two are actually owned by the town of Shrewsbury. This fund allows us to collect fares for the vans and then pay for repairs and maintenance and other operating factors related to those vans, including the drivers. Some people may be aware that over the pandemic, we have not charged for fares for our vans. We've used other sources of funding as we run the vans for a portion of the time, but fares will be starting to be collected again July 1st, 2021, in accordance with the WRTA's policy.
Great. Thank you very much. So Kristin, then moving on to Article 20, it's another enterprise fund. It's for cable, television, public, educational government access. Did you want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure, I'll briefly touch upon this. This is a fairly new article in the past few years, as our cable television public access has transferred from the town of Shrewsbury to its own enterprise. We do then transfer funds out for that operating use, and that this year is totaling $403,186,000.
Great. Thank you so much. Article 21 then is the Chapter 90 funding that we receive from the Commonwealth, and this year we've received a letter that, from the Baker-Pleito Administration, that identified $988,636 that will be coming to the town. So this article allows for the receipt of any Chapter 90 funding that is made available by the states. And we use this to cover our traditional annual road paving program that we do each summer, and we spend the vast majority of those funds each and every year. It's our actual only source that we use for road resurfacing programs and projects. Angela, I'll turn to you for Article 22, which is a transfer of $18,000 from the sale of cemetery lots. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So that money gets put towards our operating budget, and that's, so when we sell a cemetery lot, some of the money goes into that fund, and then yearly we transfer it. The money goes towards paying for our contractor to, you know, mow the grass, pay for some of the staff that marks out the graves and, you know, meets with the family and things like that.
Great. So a little bit beyond halfway through the full warrant at this point, moving on to Article 23, which is on page 38 within the Town Meeting Book that will be mailed out to all Town Meeting members. So Article 23 is a placeholder that we use to pay bills of a prior year. So anytime the town would receive a bill from services that were rendered in a year other than the current fiscal year, we actually have to bring that back to Town Meeting to pay for that. So we have to close out our books each and every year and can't pay those expenses thereafter. So we actually don't have any prior year bills, so this article would be requested to be defeated, since the town has to proactively make a motion on each and every article that's on the warrant. And then Articles 24 and 25 are both very similar in nature. They both will rescind borrowing authorizations. The first one is to rescind $2,958,000 in borrowing authorization for the public library project. And then Article 25 is to rescind $1,910,969 that was authorized to be used for the construction of the new water treatment plant. Now, so these are funds that Town Meeting, who is the body that is charged with authorizing the issuance of debt. So Town Meeting approves a specific amount of money that we're allowed to borrow for any project. And then we go out to bid for the projects and manage those projects as diligently as we can within the budget. And we've been very successful in these two projects, the library and the water treatment plant, where we didn't need to borrow all the funds that was authorized to us. Therefore, they came in well under budget. And we are just making this cleanup effort to take these funds off of our books, and it really, in the eye of the bond rating agencies, is like eliminating a line of credit. So if you have a bunch of credit cards personally, the more credit you have, the lower, the more access to money you have, and that can be looked upon negatively about anyone else that wants to lend you money. So same for us. We'd be eliminating this ability to borrow these funds in the future, and that really helps us with our bond rating and eliminates, you know, this from showing up on our authorized but unissued list, and it is looked favorably and helps us maintain our AAA bond rating. So those are, those two articles, we've done this traditionally, but it's been quite some time since we've taken any off the books. Then Article 26 is the acceptance of Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 37A of the Massachusetts General Laws. And that is providing a tax exemption for legally blind residents who own and live at a property within the town of Shrewsbury, and it would grant them $500 of a tax exemption so they wouldn't have to pay that on their tax bill. And Article 27, I was hoping, Kristin, you might be able to provide a general overview as it's the changes that are being proposed through the Personnel Board to the Personnel Bylaw. Article 27 is found on page 40 of the books. Krista, if you want to just provide a little overview of those changes?
Absolutely. Over the course of the past year, the Personnel Board, which consists of three residents and Town Manager's Office, including Mr. Mizikar, myself, and the Human Resources Coordinator, have met to review our Personnel Bylaw, and we generally make several changes each year at Town Meetings. So this is a traditional article. The main changes this year that are recommended by the Personnel Board to the Town Meeting through this article change will be outlined in a memorandum that you'll be getting in your Town Meeting packet, but I'll go through that briefly today. We had changed our classification and compensation schedule a few years ago and took that totally out of the Personnel Bylaw and out of the Town Meeting and under the purview of the Personnel Board. At that time, we took out a probationary period clause, and we have reworked this with the Personnel Board to include an introductory period, where in the Bylaw, we actually define what introductory period is and then outline why an employee would be in an introductory period as they're joining the town of Shrewsbury for employment. And it really allows for a time period where the employee and their supervisor or department head can evaluate the work and whether or not that employee is a good fit, and then adjust for plans moving forward. So that's Section 1 and Section 12 on page 40 of the Town Meeting Book related to the article. Further on, we are looking to amend Section 18, which includes holidays. We would like to add through the Personnel Bylaw the holiday Juneteenth to recognize that, as the state has recognized that as a state holiday. This would be implemented in 2022 for non-union personnel. And also to change the holiday of Columbus Day to reflect both Indigenous Peoples' Day and Columbus Day. And finally, we have amended a portion of Section 19, which is our bereavement leave, to allow for leave up to five business days for stepfamily members. So a stepmother, a stepfather, a stepsister, a stepbrother, to really make sure that we're providing that benefit to our employees. So again, you will have a comprehensive memorandum from the Personnel Board in your Town Meeting packet, and then referring to this section within the Bylaw.
Right.
Kevin, Article 28 really has some changes in the General Bylaw to Article 2 related to Town Meeting and procedure, and this has really stemmed a lot from our COVID-19 experience. Do you want to speak a little bit of what is suggested as the changes to that article?
Absolutely, yes. So Article 2 of the General Bylaws governs how Town Meetings are called and the procedures that are followed at those Town Meetings. And as Kristin mentioned, we've actually learned quite a lot about some limitations that are seemingly not meeting the needs and providing a little bit less flexibility than we'd like to have for Town Meetings. So we are proposing, I guess I should back up and say that the reason the Town Meeting has been able to be rescheduled during the last two annual Town Meeting cycles is because of the emergent, state of emergency declaration and associated special laws that were enacted by the legislature and the governor to allow for the rescheduling. But without those provisions in place, which we all hope are lifted in the near future because the conditions are improving related to the pandemic, we wouldn't have that option. So we propose to make changes to Article 2 of the Bylaw to allow flexibility when scheduling the annual Town Meeting. Right now, it must be held starting the 3rd Monday of May, and this provides flexibility that says that Town Meeting will always have to be held after the annual Town Election, but before the end of May. And it also requires that the Town Meeting provide notice, or excuse me, that the Board of Selectmen provide notice to all Town Meeting members no later than 45 days prior to setting the date for Town Meeting. So additionally, this will allow for us to utilize the Town website instead of making physical postings of the Town Meeting warrant. We've moved all postings for meetings solely online rather than expecting individual residents to actually come to the Town Hall to find out when a posted meeting would be. So we would do the same with the Town Meeting warrant and post it only on the Town website. And then further, we would allow that Town Meeting could be set, you know, Monday through Saturday, and it could be set anytime between the time of 8:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Prior, the current language prior to enacting any change said that we could not start Town Meeting on a Saturday prior to 2:00 p.m. So obviously, that doesn't give us enough time to go through a significant number of warrant articles, so we wanted to make that change as it was successful last year, and we hope it to be this year. And then the final main area of change is related to bundling and consent agendas. So it was very successful at last year's annual Town Meeting where we grouped several articles together, like the operating budget of the town and then the utilities that Dan went through, and opened all those articles up for conversation at one time and allowed for a single motion to pass multiple articles. Now, each and this change allows that any individual Town Meeting member would be allowed to request that a single article be held and considered on its own. So if anyone wanted to separately debate and vote separately on any article that was proposed for bundling by the moderator, they could do that. But this is again, in hopes of identifying articles that require a little bit less debate, putting them together, and keeping a Town Meeting move expeditiously. We look unenviably on several towns in the Commonwealth, like Lexington and Arlington, who struggle through Town Meeting, and it takes them literally 10 or 11 evenings to get through them. And Town Meeting has always been considered in Shrewsbury as an efficient business meeting, and we feel these changes are consistent with that. But we need to make them so once we get beyond the confines of the pandemic and emergency laws that we're able to continue to operate efficiently. So those are the final changes there, and then- And then, um, Kristin, why don't you take a couple minutes and touch upon Article twenty-nine, which is an exciting article that establishes a community preservation committee in our bylaws, which is a follow-on article to last annual town meetings, establishment of the Community Preservation Act, adopting it for the community and providing, uh, funds, uh, for sp- certain purposes.
Absolutely. So as, um, Kevin mentioned, uh, last annual town meeting, the Community Preservation, um, Act was adopted by town meeting and then subsequently, uh, voted favorably, uh, at the, uh, presidential election in November. Uh, so the next step of the process is to create a community preservation committee bylaw that will sit in the general bylaw section of our, our, our overall bylaws of the town of Shrewsbury. Uh, the Board of Selectmen worked very carefully over the past few months, uh, with town staff and, um, other boards and commissions, as well as other towns who already have the Community Preservation Committee general bylaws in place, and have, um, put forth a general bylaw to have a committee consisting of nine voting members in accordance with, uh, the Community Preservation Act. Um, there will be one member of the Conservation Commission, one member of the Historical Commission, one member of the Planning Board, one member of the Parks and Cemetery Commission, and one member of the Housing Authority, with the subsequent four members being appointed by the Board of Selectmen. Um, some of you may have seen other board and commission meetings and the Board of Selectmen meetings where various boards and commissions that have designees have already appointed their members, as well as the Board of Selectmen has collected, uh, interested names of those who would like to be appointed as committee. So if this bylaw does pass at the May twenty-second town meeting, that we'd be up and running with a full committee at that point in time. Um, the bylaw also addresses the terms for these committee members and also, um, addresses what the charges are of the committee. Um, the first charge for, first and foremost, is to actually form as a committee, adopt a chairperson and vice-chairperson, and then work on a, um, preservation, um, study, uh, to understand what the needs of the community are. And then once that study and, and preservation list, uh, are in place, then we can move forward with the processes of, uh, actually, uh, identifying projects and spending out of the Community Preservation Fund. Um, and I'll let Kevin speak a little bit about, um, how that taxation will work now that it has been adopted by, um, the voters.
Sure. So, um, the Community Preservation, um, fund or, or funds that will be requested from taxpayers, um, is a one percent additional real estate property, uh, tax assessment on all land, uh, within the community. The first hundred thousand dollars are exempted from that. Um, so, uh, those, um, additional assessments will go on the July first, uh, twenty-twenty-one tax bills. Uh, so, uh, taxpayers will see that and will col- as Kristin mentioned, will collect those funds, and the state will match those funds at a certain percentage, uh, using, uh, recording fees on deeds, uh, is the funding source that the state uses. And, uh, so we'll actually be, uh, matching taxpayer contributions with state, uh, funding, which is very attractive, uh, to use on projects within Shrewsbury. And, uh, we would look to begin, uh, likely funding those projects at, uh, next year's annual town meeting in May of twenty-twenty-two.
Great. Kevin, that's a great point, that we'll be seeing, uh, most likely community preservation projects on the town meeting moving forward, which has not been a tradition. Um, and these funds can be used for open space and recreation, historic resources, and community housing.
Great. Yep. So town meeting will have the appropriating authority, uh, like they do in all other aspects of, of, of the town, uh, with regards to CPA. So, right. So that was Article twenty-nine, and we'll move to Article thirty, uh, which is the establishment of an affordable housing trust. Kristin, did you want to talk about an affordable housing trust and, and what this bylaw does?
Absolutely. Um, so again, this starts on page forty-six of your town meeting book. Um, and some of you who are town meeting members may have listened in to, um, some planning board meetings and Board of Selectmen meetings where this, um, potential article was discussed. Um, back, um, many years ago, when the Inclusionary Housing Bylaw was established within the zoning bylaw of the town of Shrewsbury, it afforded for developers to build affordable housing units or to receive a special permit from the planning board and pay into an account called the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, um, as a payment in lieu of creating those units. Um, the town of Shrewsbury has held off for many years on actually creating an affordable housing trust to facilitate the, um, those funds in that account for certain projects because, um, there really weren't enough funds in the account to do much of anything. Um, this year, with the impetus of the Community Preservation Act putting into place and also the increase of funds in the account, which is currently at nine-hundred-and-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars, uh, the town planning staff, the town manager's office, and the Board of Selectmen with town council, um, have drafted an Affordable Housing Trust Bylaw, uh, in accordance with the state law, Chapter forty-four, Section Fifty-five C, uh, to create that trust, uh, made up of, um, registered voters, um, and citizens, uh, and to facilitate, uh, projects and, and other items that would be paid out of that fund. Um, so the, the trust would consist of, uh, five trustees, a member of the Board of Selectmen, the town manager, or the assistant town manager. Uh, and then three of the remaining trustees, um, would be appointed by the Board of Selectmen. Uh, and the bylaw goes on to, to talk about the powers of the trust and types of projects that would be able to work on related to that. Um, so again, this is not, uh, uncommon for many municipalities, but it is new to the town of Shrewsbury, and we'll be working through this over the next, uh, few months to a year if this article passes at town meeting.
Great. Articles thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three are zoning bylaw-related changes, uh, that we can, uh, discuss. Are you ready to move forward with those?
Would you like Mr. Cahill to join us?
Mr. Cahill will join us for those.
Take a brief recess?
Sure.
So, welcome back, everyone. Just would like to introduce our town planner, Bernie Cahill. Um, he will be giving us an overview of Articles thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three, which are zoning bylaw amendment articles. Um, the articles are currently going before the Planning Board public hearing. So today is, um, Thursday, May sixth. So tonight, the Planning Board will be wrapping up the review of these articles at their public hearing. Um, so Bernie, Article thirty-one, uh, really deals with, uh, continuance of existing uses and pre-existing non-conforming uses. Could you give us a brief overview of what that means?
Certainly. So currently, the way our zoning bylaw is written, if you own an existing non-conforming house or structure, uh, I should say, single-family or two-family structure, um, you be required to, and you wanted to increase it more than fifty percent. Uh, for example, if you were to have a ranch-style house with a single story and you wanted to increase an entire second story on top of it, it would actually be a hundred percent increase, so over the fifty percent. Currently, that would require a special permit and a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, recent case law has said, in the state, has said that that is not allowed anymore by zoning boards of appeals, um, and that the board can only ask for a special permit in that case. So, together with town council, uh, we work to just insert a very simple phrase in the existing language that states that exempts, um, that other than two single, uh, single and two-family homes, um, would be required to go through the variance and special permit process. So going forward, if this is adopted, only, um, non-single and non-two-family homes require the variance and special permit, and single-family and two-family homes, um, did I say it the other way? It's variance and special permit. And, uh, single, two-family homes would only require the special permit. So that's Article thirty-one.
Great. Um, Article thirty-two is kind of a refresh of accessory uses. Those could be sheds, decks, pools, garages. Could you give us a sense of what is proposed related to this article?
Absolutely. So Article thirty-two, um, what we discovered in the planning department and somewhat in the building department as well, is that for things, accessory uses, things like sheds, uh, swimming pools and the like, um, we're getting a lot of questions about this from developers and homeowners and a lot of confusion based on the way it's currently written, which is in an all-text format, and it's not very clear. Uh, what this would do is there's no substantive changes proposed. What this would do, it would take the text and convert it to a table format and include two figures as well to help people understand the requirements for these accessory uses. So again, just to reemphasize, there's no substantive changes being proposed here. It is merely a format change to make it much more accessible to the public developers and, quite frankly, to help the staff as well.
Great. And that can be found on pages fifty-three through fifty-six of your town meeting book for those town meeting members who'd like to get to those, uh, tables and exhibits. Um, and our final zoning article, uh, change for this year is related to the zoning map. Um, so could you explain a little bit about, um, where this change occurs and why it's occurring?
Certainly. So Article thirty-three is, as you mentioned, for the zoning map. Um, what happened last year is when the town meeting, um, in August adopted the new town center zoning districts, the boundaries of the new district didn't match up exactly with the old limited business district. So what happened is that we have some pieces of limited business district that are left, um, that weren't, we didn't put in the language at the time, um, what would happen to those little pieces. So right now, what we're doing is we're proposing that those pieces join the adjacent districts that they're next to the residential districts. Um, so in the case of the portions that you see on the plan, um, that's been distributed to town meeting members in the southwest, um, those will be converting over to, um, as proposed, to residence B-two. And in the northeast, there were actually two residence B-two portions that were left over from the new boundaries, um, on two pieces of property that would actually convert to the B-one zoning district, and those are in the northeast. And again, town meeting members can see these in the exhibit plan in their, in their booklets.
Great. And, um, you did some outreach to those, uh, property owners so they understood that the zoning changes were going to be applicable to their property if approved at town meeting, correct?
That's correct. So every person who was affected by this did receive an individual letter from the planning department explaining exactly as I just explained to you about the changes, um, that are proposed for the zoning, and if they had any questions or concerns, to reach out to the planning department.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else that we missed related to the zoning articles that you wanted to share with town meeting members?
No, I don't think so. I think we've covered all of it.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
The following three articles are Articles thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six. These are all citizens petitions, and citizens petitions require the signature of ten registered voters within the community to petition town meeting to consider special acts, uh, or, um, other changes to, um, legislative body of, of the town or by the legislative body of the town. The first, Article thirty-four, is, uh, I'll just summarize those and provide no further comment, would be the recognition that, uh, the town of Shrewsbury is in a climate and ecological emergency and request that, uh, the vote at town meeting, i- if approved, is, uh, declared and sent to, uh, the governor's office. Article thirty-five, uh, is to move to amend the Town Manager Act, Appendix B, Chapter Five-Fifty-nine of the General Laws, uh, which, uh, would establish that, um, elected members of the Board of Selectmen and School Committee could only serve for twelve consecutive years. And then Article thirty-six adopts a, uh, resolution, uh, with regards to, uh, fluoride within the town's drinking water system. Article thirty-seven is, um, a article that's been before town meeting before, which is a request for special legislation to designate mobile homes to be considered as part of the town of Shrewsbury's affordable housing stock. This would be, again, a request for special legislation to allow that provision to be, uh, conferred upon the town, included within our affordable housing, uh, requirements of ten percent. Um, and this would be, uh, passed on to the legislature for their adoption, which has not, uh, actually come to fruition in the past despite many efforts by Representative Kane and Senator Moore in recent years. And then Article thirty-eight, um, Kristin, did you want to talk about this briefly, which is, uh, potential for Selco to receive some land?
Absolutely. Um, Selco had several articles on the town meeting warrant last year to receive some land. Um, and most recently, um, a landowner off of Centec Boulevard has approached the town that there is a strip of land that is, uh, pretty unusable for building purposes, uh, at ninety-three Centec Boulevard. Uh, and this owner currently has no use for the property and was looking to gift that to a town department. Um, we identified that Selco does have a need for the land as it sits extremely close to their substation. Uh, they also have utilities underground at this location. So this article is to acquire by gift, uh, ninety-three Centec Boulevard, currently owned by the Worcester Business Development Corporation. And there will be an exhibit plan in your packet to identify where ninety-three Centec Boulevard is located. But it's just south of Fortune Boulevard at Centec Boulevard.
Great. Thank you very much. Just a couple more articles. Article thirty-nine would be, um, relative to, uh, land takings and easements associated with, uh, improvements to the Route Twenty corridor. Kristin, did you want to touch on those?
Absolutely. So, um, as many of you know, the Edgemere, uh, the former Edgemere drive-in is currently under redevelopment into, uh, mixed-use commercial residential project. Um, also, the town of Shrewsbury has recently completed, uh, sewer work associated with what, what Mr. Rowley was discussing earlier, to send, um, some of our sewer to the city of Worcester along the Route Twenty corridor. Uh, the town of Shrewsbury, in concert with the developer at Edgemere, received a, uh, three-point-seven-five-million-dollar grant, uh, through the ta- through the state's Mass Works Pro- Program to, uh, enhance the, um, transportation lanes and, uh, the travel lanes along Route Twenty and Lake Street in that vicinity. Uh, with that comes some land takings, uh, that are primarily temporary easements for grading, uh, or for a surveyor to stand on someone's land. Um, we received a lot of consent from property owners that they would be willing to donate their land or donate these temporary easements for the construction purposes associated with the roadway. Uh, but there are some landowners who are not willing to do that. So this article does allow us to, um, acquire by gift, purchase, or taking, um, these easements, uh, temporary or permanent, or the land in, um, the permanent capacity for these roadway improvements. Um, it should be noted that the town of Shrewsbury did open the bids for this construction work, uh, two weeks ago. Um, and the contractor has been selected and will be moving forward with these improvements. Uh, and we're working very closely with the developer on this. This, um, these land takings are really the final step before, uh, the full construction occurs related to the Route Twenty improvements in the Edgemere area.
Great. Great. And then Kristin, finally, uh, I think on the town meeting, uh, warrant, we just have to move through the final three articles. Article forty is a traditional article like the final two are as well, where we would transfer a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from free cash to, uh, for counseling and education services to families, uh, which would fund services of Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. Uh, Article forty-one is the transfer of twenty-five thousand dollars from free cash to the Lake Quinsigamun Commission from, uh, to fund expenses associated with the management of the lake, often water quality, uh, invasive species, uh, weed removal. And then finally, um, Article forty-two is establishing the individuals that will be named the trustees of the Wright and Harlow Charitable Trust. So with that, we've gone through all forty-two articles that will be presented for consideration by town meeting, uh, as the town's legislative body. That will happen, um, on Saturday, May twenty-second, starting eight-thirty AM at the High School Field House at sixty-four Holden Street. Um, and Kristin, all protocols, uh, related to COVID-nineteen will be in place just like they were last year. Um, so we feel like we'll have a safe and very effective, uh, town meeting. Any final thoughts?
Absolutely. We'd just encourage town meeting members to, uh, go through their packets in advance of town meeting. They have about an extra five days to review the materials since we're meeting on Saturday rather than the Monday before. And all of our town offices and departments are available for questions or comments in advance of town meeting. If, uh, those town meeting members want to send us an email or give us a phone call, we're happy to answer those questions in advance.
Great. So thanks, everyone, for watching. Uh, we'll see town meeting members at eight-thirty AM on Saturday, May twenty-second, at the High School Field House.